Derek Clement? Here. Chris Ravish?
Present.
Paul Palmaville?
Here.
Nicole Jones?
Here.
Lynda Anderson? Present.
Present. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Anybody come on a motorcycle? I saw a couple of those out today. A surprise. I like riding, but not that much.
It was nice up there.
It was, but not motorcycle nice. And fifty mile an hour wind is chilly.
Was your weather good?
Any additions to license changes to the agenda?
I'd like to add to the consent agenda. Item G, accept the resignation of April Bass, our C football coach.
Any other additions? All right. You need approval of the agenda?
So move.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Extinctions? Motion passes? Community comments? Maybe I'd like to address the board on any of the agenda items? Now any agenda items? All right. Spartan Spotlight?
This evening, we'd like to present the month of October Spartan Spotlight to Mackenzie Gary. For the month of October, Pinconning Area Schools and Pinconning Central Elementary is proud to recognize Mackenzie Gary as the worthy recipient of Spartan Spotlight. Mackenzie has been working for the district for three years and is currently a cook at Central Elementary. Prior to her current position, Mackenzie worked as a paraprofessional. Whenever her schedule allows, Mrs. Gary volunteers in various capacities at school, as well as works as a substitute paraprof and library aide. Mackenzie believes that the best thing about working at Pinconning Central Elementary is the kind and caring staff working together to make our school an awesome place to learn and work, as well as interacting with the amazing group of students she encounters every day as they go through the lunch line. In her time away from school, Mackenzie enjoys spending time with her family, cooking with her husband, as well as crocheting scarves and blankets for family and friends. Pinconning Area Schools and Pinconning Central Elementary is fortunate to have dedicated employees and volunteers like our Spartan Spotlight recipient for the month of October, Mackenzie Gary.
Mackenzie, just on behalf of the board and myself, I'd like to thank you. You do a great job. She, uh, Mackenzie, when I go over there to the kitchen at Central, she's always positive, always has a smile on her face, and you probably wouldn't know this, but she's a pretty good salesman. Saleswoman, fundraisers, she's good at that as well, but thanks for everything you do.
Two thousand eighteen nineteen audit presentation.
Thank you. I'll try and be brief.
Good enough.
I'll give you a couple of, got seventy, seventy-five pages of wonderful information there. I'll give you a couple of pages of highlights. You don't have to necessarily look at it, but if you want to make a reference to it. Page seventy-two is a recap of Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. In addition to your audit report going to the Michigan Department of Education, we also transmitted to the federal clearinghouse. So this is what the federal government looks at as far as any findings or problems with the audit. None, but I wanted it to be important that the board at least know that, that no findings and nothing that we report on in the audit. Kind of been a clean report for the last few years, but I did want to underestimate the importance of it, so hats off to your staff and that we don't have any comments related to your federal programs or to the audit in general. As far as recap of where you're at, general fund ended up the year at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar surplus approximately. You had budgeted a nineteen thousand dollar loss, so pretty close, considering that you have a twelve million dollar budget. You know, those numbers are pretty tight to budget compared to actual. Food service was even closer. For those of you who were here last year, we gave you some suggestions of trying to spend down some of the food service money. It's a no-win situation with food service. You accumulate too much money, the state's going to make you spend it anyway, so you did have a loss in food service this year, twenty-six thousand. You had budgeted a thirty-six thousand dollar loss, so again, pretty good. As far as the, the audit, we went through a few minor recommendations and things. One element that came up was an unusual item on your property taxes that you get as far as your state aid that you receive from the state. Usually property taxes and state revenue that comes in as part of your state aid are a wash. You always have changes in your taxable values that are out there. There's a timing difference at the end of the year that you may expect some reduction in your state aid when the property taxes go through. That's a result of board review changes, homestead exemptions being denied, various things. So the state assess, or the local assessors put a number out for the state to calculate what your state aid is based on what your property values are here in the district. And that timing was off a little bit at the end of the year, so you may have a bit of a recapture for next year. You know, on a positive note, your budget, we had no issues with the budget. Everything on the budget between actual and what you had budgeted was very tight, very close, within ninety-nine percent of your revenues, ninety-eight point six. Could make it a little bit better than that of, of your expenses, so good. I got drilled with all kinds of questions from, from Mike. Anything else that I missed?
Just the isolated schools.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Superintendent already knows this, but just so that the rest of the board knows, of course, with the state budget that they have, some of your categoricals that you get, sources of funding from the state have been cut. You lost one that we know of, possibly coming back, but as of right now, about sixty thousand dollars, I think, will be gone, taken away from you. So as you get paid those hard decisions to cut your budget or whatever, that's an item that you'll have to consider. As more information comes available, I'm sure you're going to adjust your budget. This lady does a great job. She already knew about that, too. You know, here I try and teach them something, and I came up, but, you know, she already knew it, so be prepared that, you know, when the final numbers come through as far as what you're going to get from the state, that may take some adjustment on your part as well, unfortunately, what you may have to amend your budget for. Thanks for the reminder. Anything else?
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and pay bills totaling five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
Support.
You have a motion to support. Any discussion? Need a roll call vote, please?
Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Palmaville?
Yes.
Derek Clement?
Yes.
Lynda Anderson? Yes. Art Kuchar?
Yes. Consent agenda passes. Mr. View?
Thank you, Mr. Kuchar. As you know, that's one of our additions to the consent agenda was the resignation of Mr. Bassler. Mrs. Long got, received that letter recently and it was effective, I believe, Friday. Is that what he dated it, Friday?
The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. So I would just like to thank Dave for his services that he's done in working with our student athletes over the last, I believe, four years. Just want to thank him for his time that he put in with our athletes. On another note, Ruth Toth recently passed, a longtime employee that was in our district. I worked with Ruth for a number of years, really kind of guided me in some areas in the federal programs. She'll, you know, dearly be missed. I don't know if there's an obituary out there or not, but she, she worked in the district, I believe, about forty years, her and her husband Andre, so thoughts go out to their families. On the audit, as you said, Mr. Guzzella talked about our audit today. I just wanted to thank Chris, our business manager, for all the hard work she does, Dave and his team for working with, with our board and our, our whole board because you're all kept up to date, but our finance committee really working hand in hand with, with the administration. I know Mr. Furman runs our federal programs, so that there was no findings there, so overall, I'm very pleased with, with the, with the team effort that we put into the audit. And again, like Mr. Guzzella said, there was no findings, which to me says a lot about the people we have working on the budget, so thanks for all that everyone does to make that audit, because those can be, those can always turn on you in a hurry, so thanks for all your input. Facilities. We have some facilities we've been working on. I've been trying to update the board pretty much every meeting recently because of our projects. I did have a gentleman come out from Southwest Bleacher. He is, he looked at our bleachers, our football grandstand, and he's going to give a report back to me and I'll share it with the site committee and the, the budget. I'll share it with the full board. He had, he just visited last week, so he's putting together a little proposal just to kind of give us some ins and outs on what to, what, you know, what to expect with, we had already talked a little bit about, we got a, a budget number per seat and it's, it's going to be a pretty substantial project, but I do want to get, get some harder numbers because I don't want to get into a situation where we don't have bleachers to sit in for, for the track meets and football games. That type of, the site committee's aware of that. I know budgets, we're going to start going over that with budget as well. The bleachers, the dugouts for the girls softball, we're still working on. We had some modified quotes. We did have some, some bids come in extremely high. Mr. LaPan from RC Hendrick and myself are working at getting those numbers down to something a little more palatable, but again, I haven't, I don't have the turned up numbers as of yet. I know we had some tentative numbers, but I think we're going to wait a little bit before we, before we move forward with that project. And then, other than that, any questions on facilities? Anything I didn't update on from the site committee? Those are our main focus right now, and as I said, I'm going with our roasts and some other areas. Parenting engagement, something that we've been discussing as a district. Mr. Furman's going to talk a little bit more about it tonight. It's kind of a process that we're taking on because the state came in last year, kind of talked to us about some things we can, we can do to better our student academic outcome, and that's to connect, you know, make sure we're communicating well with the parents, and we're kind of doing some things at the building level to, to enhance that. Mr. Furman's going to kind of talk a little bit about those things, so if you have questions in those areas, I think you'll be equipped to handle those. And policy updates. Our policy committee is going to be meeting here soon, and I know it's everybody's favorite meeting to go to and study school policy. It's a thick, do you got your binders? It's a pretty thick binder this time, but some of the things we're going to be hitting on, a lot of this stuff is just state law that changes, like the state comes out with evaluation, how much percentage of the evaluations based on student growth. Our policy says twenty-five, well, we need to increase it to forty, so those things have to get updated in our, on the OLA policy. There are some policies that deal with, like I said, staff evaluations, there's the opiate antagonists that the state's talking about being able to administer those types of opiate antagonists. That's a tough word to say, but those are the things that can revive some of them who may have OD'd. Just disposal of property for the district, drones, you wouldn't believe it, but drones, you know, we can't, we have to have policies in place. People can't fly drones over football games or, or crowds. They have to have an actual, they should have a certification. I know, I think Mrs. Wainer was trying to get that certification, but it's, you have to have two people in case one person becomes, you know, incapacitated, someone else should be able to, be able to step in and land the drone safely. So there's just some policies that we have to deal with with that, but we'll be giving the board a full recap of our upcoming meetings, so I'll just have to get with our policy committee and go over those things, so I think that's all I have.
Any other questions from Mike?
Just remember, Mike, when there, I'm sure that she's talked about it, but just remember, even with the drone thing? Yeah. Is, you've got an airport two miles from here, so just reminder of that. Okay. Even though it's a small airport, there's different regulations, even like when they, when they light off the styling entrance. Yep. There's big regulations with that, with an airport being so close. Okay. I'll mention it to them.
Any other questions? Next one. Ms. Kelly, student report.
All right, so NHS induction was last Tuesday. The National Honor Society inducted nineteen new members. The nineteen inductees joined nineteen returning members to bring total membership to thirty-eight individuals. NHS is busy creating door decorations and collecting candy for Halloween in the hallways, preparing a shopping trip to help local families for Thanksgiving, as well as planning Super Santa Saturday for December. The middle school student council facilitated their annual Halloween dance this past Friday in the middle school gym. Dinner was covered with spooky decorations, music was provided by Dono Entertainment, and pictures were taken by the multimedia class. A huge thank you to Middle School Student Council advisor Crystal Moniz for helping organize this event. Members of the middle school student council traveled to Borden Bridge and Sagan for a team bonding activity this past Thursday evening. Members shared pizza before distressing staining and painting and unique wall hanging. Each student was able to take their creation home to hang in their bedrooms. Halloween in the hallways will take place Thursday, October thirty-first, from six to seven in the hallways of high school. Over eighty students have signed up to hand out candy and over nine, nine hundred dollars worth of candy has been purchased by student council for the event. Student council invites all the children of the community to come and take part in this safe, warm, and dark Halloween experience. The fall blood drive is on Monday, November fourth, from eight AM to one-thirty PM in the Alkirkers Room. Nearly all appointment slots have now been filled, as student council hopes to collect forty pints of life-saving blood to benefit those in our community. And the high school English department will be sponsoring their annual trip to Stratford, Ontario on Tuesday. This year, fifty students in chaperones will see the play Billy Elliot. A huge thank you to Cully and Eiger for organizing this cultural experience for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Furman? Thank you, Mr. Kuchar. Coachur. I just wanted to, a couple things I want to talk about today, if I can get around it. As we're waiting for the projector, Mr. Bauer is patiently waiting for the projector to get started. I just wanted to mention, last year about this time, I, I talked to the board about our individual reading improvement plans that we are required to complete by the state. We created a written process that the teachers follow. I do want you to know that we've identified those students based on our local assessments. They've been identified, parents contacted, parent meetings have been set up, and they will be completed by November one, and then the progress monitoring of those individual reading improvement plans will continue for the remainder of the year, and that's part of that read by third grade law that we started, so just know that that's going well, and thank you to Mr. Sanford, Mrs. Shireen, our title teacher, for working with our teachers on that process.
All right, I wanted to talk to the board tonight about our three corrections required. Give you an update on those recorded actions that we had from our onset review last year. Addressing the finding from the district, section one, number two, procedures for alignment of instruction, pacing guides, implementation guides, we need to be more specific to what is being taught and how it is being assessed. We need to look at required resources to use and the required assessments to give in subject area. So what we will, what we are working through this process now, hopefully, through this. We have been working with some curriculum experts. We've looked at some of our, some of the research-based practices. We've worked with some curriculum experts to come up with what isn't a good curriculum map. A good curriculum map is a concise timeframe, it's tied to standards, incorporates vocabulary and disciplinary literacy, clearly states a learning objective and student-centered language so students can understand it, is measured by assessments, both formative and summative, accurately measures success and provide data that is useful for measuring growth over time, and really how we change our instruction in between those intervals and has clearly identified resources. So one of the things that Mr. Sanford and I did today, we met with our fifth grade team and we worked on our fifth grade mathematics curriculum map, and as you can see, we have a concise timeline here. It's tied to state standards, has content vocabulary, so the objectives, the format we're using is we want the students to be able to say, I can read and write whole numbers through the millions, so they know exactly what's expected of them, and the teachers can use this and really put, just put it up on the board so that students know what will be expected from them. And you can see there are assessments there as well and required resources, and just know that this is really a living document. As we move forward, teachers will be meeting throughout the year to assess this curriculum map and the data that they receive from local and state assessments to make adjustments. So again, thank you to Mr. Sanford and the fifth grade team today. They worked very hard at, at getting this set up and was very pleased with the process today. I do want you to know that each grade level in each subject area will be using this same template. We've had this template approved by the Office of Field Services at the State of Michigan, and really it will help our teachers, so if a teacher moves from, let's say, second grade to fourth grade, it'll be in the same format and they'll know exactly where to go for the resources, so we want to, we want to provide some consistency to our, our staff. The second correction required was at the building level, and it was strand one, teaching for learning, indicator number four, analyzing data, guide instruction. They were looking for a more cohesive and organized process for teachers to collaborate on data and planning for instruction. Could possibly mean revising schedules, which we've done, especially at Central. Mr. Sanford's done a great job of rearranging his schedule so teachers can collaborate and really creating a system for this to occur for every teacher, and the one caveat that they said is this cannot be on their own time. Teachers should not be here till seven o'clock at night working grade level meetings, but we needed to provide time for them to do that during the day. So we, we've done that. I'll give you an example. This is a copy of the notes from our data meetings at Central. As you can see, our first data meeting took place on September twenty-seventh. It was one of our half-days. We have another one scheduled for this Friday, and we do have data meeting reviews every six weeks after that, so the teachers will have time within their day to look at that and collaborate. And also, I know at Central Elementary, Mr. Sanford has rearranged the schedule so the teachers, at least once a week, all the grade level teachers have time to collaborate, so all the third grade teachers have time within the day to collaborate, at least once a week. Okay? One of the things that we've done as well, as you can see on these notes, we've tried to focus and make sure the teachers understand why we're doing this, because this is one of the questions of why are we meeting? Why are we providing these data meetings? And in all of our notes, we're, we're reminding them that our district improvement plan, our goal number one strategy seven, professional development and reading comprehension, so teachers will receive appropriate PD and reading comprehension. Strategies will include a literacy coach to enhance reading strategies and improve reading comprehension, so that's what we're working on now, and then we focus again on the onset review indicator and the finding and what we're trying to erase from the State of Michigan. So we include that in our information as well. And then Mr. View had spoken about parent engagement, and that's really our third finding, was, you know, addressing the finding for parent engagement, which was section one, number five. A parent engagement plan must be written and implemented in accordance with section one-one-one-six of ESCE. So basically, we need to create a parent involvement plan at the building level to involve parents and engage parents in the process, and that, and we are going to do that as administrators at the building level. Really, the purpose of the plan is to establish a meaningful parent and family engagement and a plan to develop, that is developed jointly with parents and families and then effectively implemented. One of the things that they found was we had a plan, but parents weren't really involved in the process. Parents didn't, weren't aware of some of the things we did, and they weren't involved in the, as involved as they should have been in the development of that plan, and then we also have to provide support to our staff to build capacity for effective parent engagement. Really, we want to build the capacity of school staff to effectively engage and involve parents and families, so we're working on that process now, and again, we're going to begin parent and family engagement plan meetings in November, and we will hold them throughout the year to help develop and strengthen our parent engagement plans at the building level. Then Mr. View had mentioned a book study with staff with five key areas that we're going to look at. Culture that engages every family. We need to communicate and build relationships with families. Need to empower every family, engage every family with decision-making, and engage a greater community. How can they help us with, with parent engagement as well? I did, in your board packet, one of the first things we did was that, a culture that engages every family and trying to communicate with them. I put a sample of a positive postcard that we're using at Linwood, and the teachers, teachers are going to contact every student by the end of October, at least send a postcard to every student in their classroom, find one positive thing that they've done, and just let the parents know what's happening as far as positive things in the classroom, because really, I think one of the things that we find is parents really don't want to come to the building because they haven't had a positive experience. They get a phone call from the principal, it's usually something that's negative, so we're trying to change that narrative. I know Mr. View is leading that charge, and as, as administrators, we are contacting parents to find out what we can do to help them and really thank them for being part of our district, and they really, I mean, they really are customers and they can choose other districts, and we need to find ways to keep, keep them here and make them part of this process, so. Okay? Any questions? Other? Reports from other administrative staff?
I'd just like to take a minute to thank our auditors. They work with me all year so that the issues that we have are addressed throughout the year and aren't a big issue at the end. Same with the board and the budget committee. When things come up, you guys work with Mike and I so that we can get it taken care of before it actually becomes an issue or a finding. The auditors are always really well, really good about teaching me how to fix issues or walk me through stuff if they learn something that I need to know, they always make a phone call and let me know, so I appreciate that and thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Other staff?
I'll just say that high school minister met today at a staff meeting to discuss the rollout of the parent engagement with the book study and how that's going to look moving forward. You know, Mr. Furman touched on it, but not only how to get parents involved, but how us as a school can get parents more engaged and provide opportunities for them, because I think that we've kind of lacked in that area a little bit. So we're going to discuss as a staff how the middle school, high school can, you know, create more opportunities for parents to be, for opportunities for them to come here and feel comfortable coming here and being engaged in, you know, decision-making processes and all things like that, so really looking forward to, looking forward with that. And we have Friday, Donald Tronblie from the ISD is going to come up and discuss our curriculum mapping, that process, and really get the ball rolling with the middle school, high school, you know, with the curriculum maps, and I think that's the first step into seeing improvement in scores. If we haven't aligned curriculum, that's going to be, that's going to be crucial, so excited to get that started as well.
Ms. Kyle? Anybody else?
About a week or so ago, we recognized about a hundred and sixty-eight of our students for fall renaissance. It was very encouraging when we came to our attendance awards. We had about ninety-eight percent of our attendance award winners were Renaissance winners as well, academic, so it kind of correlates, it goes along with that correlation that we make to students every year, that the best indicator of academic success is being here every day. So I was very proud to recognize about a hundred and sixty-eight of our kids, so kudos to them, and that's without our freshman class. So between sophomore, juniors, and seniors, to have a hundred and sixty-eight kids qualify is very, very good sign of what we're doing here.
Great. Thanks, Tony. Anybody else?
I'm still waiting on exploration estimates for the soccer fields. Contacted them again today. Girls golf, Tori Sharp finished fifteenth and a state champion at Battle Creek on the eighteenth and nineteenth. Very proud of that. Boys soccer and football, our complete, the banquet for football is the twenty-ninth, round night. Volleyball is finishing up this week with districts November sixth, and senior night
There are some policies that deal with, like I said, staff evaluations. There's the opiate antagonists that the state's talking about being able to administer those types of opiate antagonists. That's a tough word to say, but those are the things that can revive someone who may have OD'd. Disposal of property for the district, drones. You wouldn't believe it, but drones, you know, we can't, we have to have policies in place. People can't fly drones over football games or crowds. They have to have an actual, they should have a certification. I know, I think Mrs. Wainers was trying to get that certification, but it's, you have to have two people in case one person becomes incapacitated, someone else should be able to, be able to step in and land the drone safely. So there's just some policies that we have to deal with with that. But we'll be giving the board a full recap of our upcoming meetings, so I'll just have to get with our policy committee and go over those things. So I think that's all I have.
Any other questions?
Just remember, Mike, when there, I'm sure that she's talked about it, but just remember, even with the drone thing.
Yeah.
Is, you've got an airport two miles from here, so just remind her of that.
Okay.
Even though it's a small airport, there's different regulations, even like when they, when they light off the styling entrance.
Yep.
There's big regulations with that with an airport so close.
Okay.
I'll mention it to him. Any other questions? Ms. Selley, student reporter.
All right, so NHS induction was last Tuesday. The National Honor Society inducted nineteen new members. The nineteen inductees joined nineteen returning members to bring total membership to thirty-eight individuals. NHS is busy creating door decorations and collecting candy for Halloween in the hallways, preparing a shopping trip to help local families for Thanksgiving, as well as planning Super Santa Saturday for December. The middle school student council facilitated their annual Halloween dance this past Friday in the middle school gym. During was covered with spooky decorations, music was provided by Hidongo Entertainment, and pictures were taken by the multimedia class. A huge thank you to Middle School Student Council Advisor Crystal Moniz for helping organize this event. Members of the Middle School Student Council traveled to Borden, Borshin, Saginaw for team bonding activity this past Thursday evening. Members shared pizza before distressing staining and painting and meatball hanging. Each student was able to take their creation home to hang in their bedrooms. Halloween in the hallways will take place Thursday, October 31st, from six to seven in the hallways of high school. Over eighty students have signed up to hand out candy, and over nine hundred dollars' worth of candy has been purchased by student council for the event. Student council invites all the children of the community to come and take part in this safe, warm, and dark Halloween experience. The Fall Blood Drive is on Monday, November 4th, from eight AM to one thirty PM in the Alperca Room. Nearly all appointment slots have now been filled, as student council hopes to collect forty pints of life-saving blood to benefit those in our community. And the high school English department will be sponsoring their annual trip to Stratford, Ontario on Tuesday. This year, fifty students in chaperones will see the play Billy Elliot. A huge thank you to Colleen Eigner for organizing this cultural experience for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Ferber.
Thank you, Mr. Kucher. I just wanted to, a couple things I want to talk about today if I can get them on. As we're waiting for the projector, Mr. Bowers patiently waiting for the projector to get started. I just wanted to mention, last year about this time, I talked to the board about our individual reading improvement plans that we are required to complete by the state. We created a written process that the teachers follow. I do want you to know that we've identified those students based on our local assessments. They've been identified, parents contacted, parent meetings have been set up, and they will be completed by November one. And then the progress monitoring of those individual reading improvement plans will continue for the remainder of the year, and that's part of that read by third grade law that we started. So just know that that's going along. Thank you to Mr. Sanford, Mrs. Shireen, our title teacher, for working with our teachers on that process. All right, I wanted to talk to the board tonight about our three corrections required, give you an update on those, recorded actions that we had from our onsite review last year, addressing the finding from the district, section one, number two, procedures for alignment of instruction, pacing guides, implementation guides, need to be more specific to what is being taught and how it is being assessed. We need to look at required resources to use and the required assessments to give in each subject area. So what we will, what we are working through this process now, hopefully, through this, we have been working with some curriculum experts. We've looked at some of our, some of the research-based practices. We've worked with some curriculum experts to come up with what is in a good curriculum map. A good curriculum map is a concise timeframe, it's tied to standards, incorporates vocabulary and disciplinary literacy, clearly states a learning objective in student-centered language so students can understand it, is measured by assessments, both formative and summative, accurately measures success and provide data that is useful for measuring growth over time, and really how we change our instruction in between those intervals, and has clearly identified resources. So one of the things that Mr. Sanford and I did today, we met with our fifth-grade team, and we worked on our fifth-grade mathematics curriculum map. And as you can see, we have a concise timeline here. It's tied to state standards, has content vocabulary, so the objectives, the format we're using is we want the students to be able to say, "I can read and write whole numbers through the millions," so they know exactly what's expected of them, and the teachers can use this, and really put, just put it up on the board so that students know what will be expected from them. And you can see there are assessments there as well, and required resources, and just know that this is really a living document. As we move forward, teachers will be meeting throughout the year to assess this curriculum map and the data that they receive from local and state assessments to make adjustments. So again, thank you to Mr. Sanford and the fifth-grade team today. They worked very hard at getting this set up, and was very pleased with the process today. I do want you to know that each grade level in each subject area will be using this same template. We've had this template approved by the Office of Field Services at the State of Michigan, and really it will help our teachers, so if a teacher moves from, let's say, second grade to fourth grade, it'll be in the same format, and they'll know exactly where to go for the resources. So we want to, we want to provide some consistency to our staff. The second correction required was at the building level, and it was strand one, teaching for learning, indicator number four, analyzing data, guide instruction. They were looking for a more cohesive and organized process for teachers to collaborate on data and planning for instruction. Could possibly mean revising schedules, which we've done, especially at Central. Mr. Sanford's done a great job of rearranging his schedule so teachers can collaborate, and really creating a system for this to occur for every teacher. And the one caveat that they said is this cannot be on their own time. Teachers should not be here till seven o'clock at night, working grade-level meetings, but we needed to provide time for them to do that during the day. So we've, we've done that. I'll give you an example. This is a copy of the notes from our data meetings at Central. As you can see, our first data meeting took place on September 27th, it was one of our half-days. We have another one scheduled for this Friday, and we do have data meeting reviews every six weeks after that, so the teachers will have time within their day to look at that and collaborate. And also, I know at Central Elementary, Mr. Sanford has rearranged the schedule so that teachers, at least once a week, all the grade-level teachers have time to collaborate, so all the third-grade teachers have time within the day to collaborate, at least once a week, okay? One of the things that we've done as well, as you can see on these notes, we've tried to focus and make sure that teachers understand why we're doing this, because this is one of the questions of why are we meeting, why are we providing these data meetings? And in all of our notes, we're reminding them that our district improvement plan, our goal number one, strategy seven, professional development and reading comprehension, so teachers will receive appropriate PD in reading comprehension. Strategies will include a literacy coach to enhance reading strategies and improve reading comprehension. So that's what we're working on now. And then we focus again on the onsite review indicator and the finding and what we're trying to erase from the State of Michigan. So we include that in our information as well. And then Mr. View had spoken about parent engagement, and that's really our third finding, was, you know, addressing the finding for parent engagement, which was section one, number five. A parent engagement plan must be written and implemented in accordance with section 1116 of ESEA. So basically, we need to create a parent involvement plan at the building level to involve parents and engage parents in the process, and that, and we are going to do that as administrators at the building level. Really, the purpose of the plan is to establish a meaningful parent and family engagement, and a plan to develop, that's developed jointly with parents and families, and then effectively implement it. One of the things that they found was we had a plan, but parents weren't really involved in the process. Parents didn't, weren't aware of some of the things we did, and they weren't involved in the, as involved as they should have been in the development of that plan. And then we also have to provide support to our staff to build capacity for effective parent engagement, really to build the capacity of the school staff to effectively engage, involve parents and families. So we're working on that process now, and again, we're going to begin parent and family engagement plan meetings in November, and we will hold them throughout the year to help develop and strengthen our parent engagement plans at the building level. And then Mr. View had mentioned a book study with staff with five key areas that we're going to look at. Culture that engages every family, we need to communicate and build relationships with families, need to empower every family, engage every family with decision-making, and engage their greater community, how can they help us with, with parent engagement as well. I did, in your board packet, one of the first things we did was that, a culture that engages every family and trying to communicate with them. I put a sample of a positive postcard that we're using at Linwood, and the teachers, teachers are going to contact every student by the end of October, at least send a postcard to every student in their classroom, find one positive thing that they've done, and just let the parents know what's happening as far as positive things in the classroom. Because really, I think one of the things that we find is parents really don't want to come in the building because they haven't had a positive experience. They get a phone call from their principal, it's usually something that's negative. So we're trying to change that narrative. I know Mr. View is leading that charge, and as administrators, we are contacting parents to find out what we can do to help them, and really thank them for being part of our district, and they really, I mean, they really are customers, and they can choose other districts, and we need to find ways to keep, keep them here and to make them part of this process. So, okay? Any questions?
Other? Reports from other administrative staff.
I'd just like to take a minute to thank our auditors. They work with me all year so that the issues that we have are addressed throughout the year and aren't a big issue at the end. Same with the board and the budget committee. When things come up, you guys work with Mike and I so that we can get it taken care of before it actually becomes an issue or a finding. The auditors are always really well, really good about teaching me how to fix issues or walk me through stuff. If they learn something that I need to know, they always make a phone call and let me know. So I appreciate that, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Other staff?
I'll just say that high school ministry met today, had a staff meeting to discuss the role of the parent engagement with the book study and how that's going to look moving forward. You know, Mr. Ferber touched on it, but not only how to get parents involved, but how us as a school can get parents more engaged and provide opportunities for them, because I think that we've kind of lacked in that area a little bit. So we're going to discuss as a staff, how the middle school, high school can, you know, create more opportunities for parents to be, for opportunities for them to come here and feel comfortable coming here and being engaged, you know, decision-making processes and all things like that. So really looking forward to, looking forward with that. And we have Friday, Doug Trombley from the ISD is going to come up and discuss our curriculum mapping, that process, and really get the ball rolling with the middle school, high school, you know, with the curriculum maps, and I think that's the first step in seeing improvement in scores. If we haven't aligned curriculum, that's going to be, that's going to be crucial. So excited to get that started as well.
Ms. Kyle, anybody else?
About a week or so ago, we recognized about one hundred and sixty-eight of our students for fall renaissance. It was very encouraging when it came to our attendance awards. We had about ninety-eight percent of our attendance award winners were Renaissance winners as well, academic. So it kind of correlates, it goes along with that correlation that we make to students every year, that the best indicator of academic success is being here every day. So I was very proud to recognize about one hundred and sixty-eight of our kids, so kudos to them, and that's without our freshman class. So between sophomore, juniors, and seniors, to have one hundred and sixty-eight kids qualify is very, very good sign of what we're doing here.
Great, thanks, Tony. Anybody else?
I'm still waiting on excavation assignments for the soccer fields. Contacted a gym today. Girls golf, Tori Sharp finished fifteenth, and the state champion at Battle Creek on the eighteenth and nineteenth. Very proud of that. Boys soccer and football, our complete, the banquet for football is the twenty-ninth, round night. Volleyball is finishing up this week with districts November sixth, and senior night is October thirtieth.
Thank you. Anybody else? Helen? All right. Budget committee.
Okay, so everybody's talked about this, the amendment to the budget, and, you know, it was good as everybody has stated, so thanks to everybody for working on that, and the next step is to move forward with amendments for nineteen twenty, and get our amended budget in place, and then lay out our plans for the next few years for our capital needs, and what we're going to do and how we can fund that accordingly. So short brief stay in the action here, and then Chris has to get back at it, so.
All right, thank you. No other committees met, did they?
No.
No, it's just budget. All right, thank you. All right, non-consent agenda, it's up until the audit?
Propose to accept the eighteen nineteen audit as presented.
Support.
Motion, support, any discussion? Two men, roll call vote, please.
Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Tommerville?
Yes.
Jared Clement?
Yes.
Linda Anderson?
Yes.
Mark Kucher?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
Public comment? Anybody like to address the board at this time? You just state your name.
Jennifer Peacock.
All right, thank you.
Could I come up and hand you out some paper? I don't have enough for the board members, I just realized how many people were sitting here.
Thank you.
I'm giving everybody a copy of the dress code, because I don't know what you guys bring with you up here either, so just trying to be as prepared as possible.
Thank you much.
Okay. Good evening, board members and community. Let me start by saying my name is Jennifer Peacock. I'm an alumni class of nineteen ninety-seven, Pinconning. My husband is also an alumni class of ninety-four. My mother-in-law, probably going to correct, because I really hate public speaking, I'm honest, only for my kids while I do this. My mother-in-law, alumni class of seventy-six, and my grandmother, Virginia Wilson Peacock, alumni class of nineteen forty-eight, who also served as school board secretary and president in the nineties. Many other family and friends are alumni here too, have a long history in this school. Pinconning has always been a small-town school where I attended, and there was a sense of community, and school spirit was pretty high, and there was a sense of pride. Now this school is really a laughingstock of the era. Poor leadership and even worse policies seems to be the norm here. On October tenth, twenty nineteen, my husband Dana and I pulled into the west parking lot right over here, near the gym. We parked and we were waiting for our daughter Willow, who's a freshman at Pinconning, to get out of volleyball practice. I was shocked and stunned at a young man standing in the window of the weight room, shirtless, and I pointed it out to my husband, saying, "Really?" Because if this is one of our daughters, they would be expelled. About five minutes later, Willow came out to our truck and looked very upset, and when I asked what was going on, she proceeded to tell us that she was called to the office because her clothing was inappropriate. You have the photo. Photo one is what she was wearing the day she was inappropriate. Let's see here. Willow said that the secretary in the hall monitor told her that the shirt she was wearing was inappropriate and put a hoodie on for the rest of the day. They also told Willow, if she was dress coded again, she would be removed from the volleyball team. Note this, we have never been notified that Willow was inappropriate, violating the dress code here. I assure you that Willow owns no article of clothing that is inappropriate, except her volleyball shorts, which are required by PHS to wear in practice and at games. This is not the first time or the second time that something like this has happened to Willow this year. That was the fifth time alone. Monday, October twenty-first, it happened again. At noon, I received a text from Willow. See photo two. She was told that it was possibly inappropriate and that they would get back with her. At the end of the day, she was leaving the school to board the bus for the game, and the hall monitor told her to never wear the sweater again. My husband and I have read the handbook. We have checked our daughter's clothing every morning, and yet the problem is continuing. Both Willow and Lily, our other daughter here, who is a senior, this has happened numerous times to them over the last three years that they have attended Pinconning. They purchase their clothing, and it becomes a norm in our house to say, "Don't give the school a reason." That stopped today. They have done nothing wrong. Their clothing is not a distraction. The policies that you have are too vague and not consistent. Here is my main problem. Every time a student, mainly ladies, are called down to the office to be checked over like a piece of meat, they are missing vital teachable time. They are being made to feel like they are a problem, a distraction, and that they are inappropriate. These young women are barely comfortable in their own skin because of the changes taking place inside and outside of them. Any student or staff can report a dress code violation. Have you ever had a student or a staff faulty report? I guarantee you have. And now you've wasted a young lady's time and beat her down emotionally. For what? For nothing more than an assumption that she was inappropriate. You need to do better. Why isn't the policy for an adult to check or look in the room and see if she is, if, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to look in the door and see if there is cause to disrupt the student's whole day? Because it does disrupt their whole day. After being called down, the girls return to class feeling ashamed, alone, dirty, mad, defeated, and less than. Less than, because they're made to feel like somehow their newly-changing bodies are a distraction to their male counterparts and to the male stu, the male staff in the school. This is unacceptable from this day forward, and we need to do better for these students. We need to resolve these issues. We've roughly had eleven percent student loss in this district in the last five years. Many parents reached out to me over the last few weeks stating that dress code was or is a reason that they left or are planning to leave Pinconning. The students feel harassed. Telling them that they will be removed from a team for improper dress code is ridiculous, especially when parents aren't even being notified of an issue. There is not a definite clear dress code. The violations are too vague and not consistent from student to student. I totally agree with the dress code, but it needs to be specific. For example, the ripped jean issue. Are there to be no holes above mid-thigh or no holes in the jeans, period? Shirts, no plunging neckline, what does that even mean? A V-neck will look different from person to person. If it states no exposed collarbones, then there'll be no discrepancies. Who is enforcing the rules? I feel like students should not be allowed to turn in other students. Is it the job of the secretary to enforce said vague rules? There needs to be a team of staff members who are trained on clear rules and enforce them. What is the goal of a dress code? It should be to have a safe environment to learn, help build a positive body image for the student, and be clear and consistent when it comes to dress code rules. Solutions for this would be, no student should miss teachable valuable time to be dress coded. Rules should be fair, clear, and consistent. Dress code violations should be a tangible piece of papers sent home to the parents to be notified, and person or persons enforcing the dress code should be a reliable system of trained, fair staff members who are all on the same page when it comes to the rules. There seems to be a trend at Pinconning with lack of conflict resolution. So much gets ignored or swept under the rug, and someone needs to start doing something. You have the power to unite with the parents and the teachers to help mold whole, employable, knowledgeable, caring students, instead of the broken, less-than, damaged, and bitter students that you are currently sending into the world. You need to do better. Don't fail any more of our children.
I just want to point out that I'm her grandmother, and I've taken her school shopping, and I've had her say to me, "Well, Grandma, I can't buy that top," which I saw nothing wrong with. That will be a dress code violation, and I look at it, and I can't believe it's a dress. But I say, "Okay, good, okay, Willow," and I'll go to buy her jeans, and it's hard to find jeans that are stylish, that they really like, that don't have some tears and things in them. And so we should be very careful to make sure that they were no tears above the knee. And some of them were just barely a little scratch, it was just, and she loved the pocket. So I'm just telling you, this child tried really hard for shopping with her grandmother to make sure this didn't happen to her, and when her mother told me about it, I just couldn't believe it.
And his other kids too, his other kids too.
No, it's not his fault, this is across the board, and it's not consistent.
But I, but I didn't take the other kid's shopping, so I can tell you firsthand.
Thank you.
My daughter gets dress coded at least four times a week. Does it matter who checks over her clothes? My name is Sarah Mullen. My daughter is Madison Mullen. The latest thing is the Nike headband. The tag says Nike headband. We pay fifteen dollars for these. She's being told that she's wearing them too low, that she needs to pull them back. It's not a bandana, it is a headband. I don't understand. She wears the headband because she was bullied because of being called the N-word, or because her forehead's too big, or because there's acne. That's why she wears the headband. At least three times a week, she is dress coded for this. She wears these every day because of bullying.
Thank you. Anybody else? I would like to thank you for coming out. Know that what you've done has caused us to reflect and the administrators to reflect on what we do, and know, put out the weaknesses and any inconsistencies, and this will be going to policy. So this is for public discourse. You went about it the right way, contacting the administrators, coming to the board. I thank you for your support and your guidance in this so we can do a better job. So thank you much for coming out, and we'll be addressing it, and hopefully we'll see improvement. And I understand you, I have my daughter myself, and she was dress coded, so I understand where you're coming from, okay? Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Thank you again for coming out and giving us some direction. We really appreciate it.
Kucher, I'd like to invite him to our, as part of our parent engagement policy.
There you go, right there.
And really be part of that process. So I'd like to ask that you be a part of that process.
Absolutely, and we do have policy committee meetings, and those are open to the public. You can check the website, and we'll post it up. If you'd like to be notified, just get ahold of the board office, and they'll do their best to make sure that you get that information directly. But again, thank you for coming out and doing your public service. Discussion items from the board? Seeing none? Make a motion to the juror. Second? Any discussion?
Not having discussion on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hosed?
Frank, would you like a copy of my presentation?
No. They know.
If, if anybody desires to have a copy of it, I will point them in your direction.